My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is roll call. Please call, go to roll.
Our Curry. Mr. Severson is absent. Gray. Moss. Johnson.
Here.
Nader.
Here.
Rokuchi.
Here. Thank you. Report from the planning director, EJ.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll change the mic over, just so everybody in the room can hear me. EJ Avaldi with the Planning Services Division. First, let's just do calendars real quick for upcoming planning commission meetings. We're going to be meeting in two weeks on February 25th. As I had mentioned at the previous meeting, we're going to have a draft EIR hearing for the Auburn Creekside Commercial Project. We have a road name change and may have another item on there as well. March 10th, two weeks after the February 25th meeting, we also have a couple items. Winding Creek Subdivision, which is a West Placer subdivision project. And then, we're also trying to bring, bring to you a workshop on the medical marijuana ordinance that has, has previously been at the Board of Supervisors. And then, later in March, we're hopefully looking at a Tahoe meeting with all the activity that's going on up in Tahoe, which Crystal Jacobson is going to give us an update on today. So that's Planning Commission. At the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, no development projects were considered in their entirety. However, Placer Vineyards was on the agenda. They authorized the formation of a new Recreation and Park District to serve the specific plan area, and also Rioa Vineyards annexed that project site authorization to get into county service area for sewer service. So, just note that those projects continue to move forward. Obviously, those have been approved and are going through the process. One other thing the board did on Tuesday was recognize employees for their years of service for the county. Here in the agency, our Michael Johnson was recognized for his 10 years of service in Planning Services Division. George Roszosko was recognized for 25 years of service, as well as Rich Kai, who's in our Engineering and Services, Engineering and Surveying Division. He also had 25 years. So, that's all I have for you. We've just got a couple items.
Any questions of EJ?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and the public can comment on any item that's not on the agenda today if they wish. They can come up to the podium. If not, we'll move on to the next item. The consent agenda, there is no items on the consent agenda, so we'll just skip right to the timed items. Schaefer Mill Subdivision, AKA Englewood and Timelick, and the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. This is a proposal to consider a request regarding the employee housing for the Schaefer's Mill project. Subsequent to the public hearing notice being sent out, comments were received from the town of Truckee requesting the opportunity to meet, to discuss the proposal, to better understand what was being proposed and how it may impact the town of Truckee. Staff met with the applicant. The applicant concurred that there was merit to continue this item to allow for those meetings with the town of Truckee to occur. Staff recommends that your commission continue this item off calendar so that staff in the town of Truckee and the applicant can meet to further discuss this issue prior to bringing it back to your commission for consideration.
Okay, and we got that memo yesterday, and it's also a printed memo here on our, at our desk. Is there any questions?
I make the motion that we...
Any questions first?
Continue.
I have a question.
I just, just out of curiosity, does the town of Truckee extend the same courtesy to Placer County when, when we would like to discuss their projects? Do they put them on?
Typically, yes, they do. There's actually a very good working relationship up, up the hill with them.
You had a question?
Yes, Michael, I have a question. Concerning the proposal itself, as it shows up on the agenda here, who actually puts the proposal on the form that it is? Is it the building or Planning Department, or is it the applicant?
The applicant sets forth the proposal and, and staff reviews that proposal.
So, the statement based on the inability of existing employee housing projects, that statement has been vetted by planning?
Yes, yes, it has.
Okay, so if we have evidence that shows that that's not true, who would you talk to?
You would talk to me.
Okay, that's good enough. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead now.
Okay, I make the...
Wait a second, wait before you make the motion. I guess since this is, was an agendized item, I think we need to ask if the public has any comments. Okay, now...
Ask if there's any public.
Well, there's, there's three people out there. They represent four now, Mr. Johnson's back there. So now you can make your motion, sir.
I forgot what it was. I make the motion that we continue this item off calendar.
Second.
As proposed.
Moving second in. Roll call.
Our Curry.
Yes.
Gray.
Here.
Moss.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Nader.
Here.
Rokuchi.
Yes, okay. Now, we only have one other, other item, and I guess it says it's 10:10, but can we start this update before 10:10? Or should we wait until a couple more minutes, or what?
No, yeah, I think we do have to wait.
Well, just because it's a timed item.
It is, it is a, it's not a, it's a, what do you think, council?
I think we can go ahead.
Okay, just want to be sure that we don't get ourselves in trouble over a small, small detail. Does somebody go move that clock ahead? Okay. This is, this, this item is an update on the Tahoe area project, and we have a memo in our agenda package that kind of synopses all of them, but we'll have a presentation by staff at this time on them.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Crystal Jacobson with the Planning Services Division, here today to kind of walk you through a long line of projects that are making their way through the planning process and will be before your commission in due time. So, with that, I'm gonna, here's a, kind of a map that shows the current, what we call current planning projects. So, the development proposals, and these aren't all of them, but these are the large ones that you'll see probably within the next six months, come before your commission. So, we have, and I'll talk in, in more detail about these as, as we go on here. But up here, we have the Tahoe Expedition Academy, which you read about in your staff report, that's located in the Martis Valley area. We also have the Martis Valley West Project. You'll see it on both sides of 267. It's a unique transfer density is what that project is, specific plan, which I'll talk about. And then here, the Brockway Campground. This project is actually within the Tahoe Basin area, and I'll go into detail on that as well. And then over here, a lot of activity in the Squaw Valley and Alpine area. You've got the Village at Squaw Valley Specific Plan right in the Squaw Valley area, as well as Plump Jack. And then here, along the 89 corridor, you've got the Palisades at Squaw Valley, and then a very new one. It's actually not a submitted application yet, but a, we're excited about this project. It's a Squaw Valley Museum. And, and then over here in Alpine, more activity. The Alpine Meadows Squaw Valley is called the Base-to-Base Gondola. So, it connects Squaw to Alpine. And then a subdivision here, the White Wolf Subdivision. Again, this one is not a formal submittal yet, but I'll talk about what the plan is there. And then this one right here is making its way through the process, the Alpine Sierra Subdivision. So, a lot of activity, as you can see over here. Then here in the basin, and this is, we've talked about this before. This is the Tahoe City Lodge. It's a redevelopment project, and it kind of goes hand in hand with the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, which is a policy document that I've been working on. And so, I'll talk about how those two are related and walk you through where we're at with the area plan as well. So, first with the Alpine Sierra Subdivision. This, again, is in, in the Alpine Meadows area. It is a residential, a proposed residential subdivision on 46 acres, and it's proposal for 33 single-family detached units plus 14 attached, single-family half-plexes. Through this process, there was some concern by staff with the density in certain areas. This area right down here was quite dense. These are the half-plexes. And so, there was some concern about compatibility and also slope. It's real steep in that area. And we have a policy here at the county where we don't like to see development on slopes of over 30%. So, we had, we've worked with the applicant extensively and have received input from the public on, on these issues as well. And so, they have actually revised this project. And so, this is the option B. And so, this is really, it's a kind of a co-equal. You know, we've come to agreement on, on this concept. This would widen open space stream corridor area on the northeastern, which is over, kind of over here. This is the area where there is some avalanche concern, and so, we wanted, they relocated a maintenance facility on this side. And so, really, we feel like we've come to a place where this is something that we could support. So, the proposed half-plexes down in here, I mean, if you look back, you can really see the difference in density. Right, excuse me, right down in here. So, these are now kind of creating, they created more sort of larger cabin, what they're calling cabin lots. And then, this, this, this area over here didn't change a whole lot. But, so where this is in the process, there is an administrative review, draft environmental document that is being reviewed by staff right now. And we expect a draft document out for public review fairly, fairly quickly here, probably within the next couple of months. And so, when that comes out for public review, that would be presented to your commission for consideration on the EI, not consideration, but to, to receive comments on the draft EIR. So, then we have, and, and so I'm kind of starting in the Squaw Valley Alpine area, and then I'll move over to the Martis area after this. But so, the Palisades at Squaw Valley, this project actually had been, it was a former project. You may have heard of it, called the Sienna at Squaw, I think it was, years ago. It came back in as a Palisades. This is a terrible map. Sorry, but this is Highway 267 right over on, on here. And so, it sits behind, kind of behind the 711 on Highway 89, if you guys are familiar with that area. So, right, right as you go into Squaw Valley, it's a residential development proposing 63 units. It's a mix of single-family and half-plexes, and it's on approximately 20 acres. This is substantially less density than what was proposed years ago. So, it's, it's a very different project than what it looked like years ago, if, if any of you are familiar with, with that one, the Sienna one. And so, right now, we've been meeting with the Squaw Valley Public Service District to really talk about water supply. They are working with the district on, you know, an agreement in terms of capacity to serve the project. And, and then, an administrative draft is currently under review by staff. So, we're reviewing that right now, and we expect a draft EIR sometime soon, within the spring. So, again, another project where you'll probably see a draft environmental document out for public review. And again, it would be before your commission to seek input on that, on that document. So, the next one is what's called a base-to-base gondola. This is a Squaw Valley Alpine Meadows gondola. So, it really connects the two. So, you've got Squaw, excuse me, Alpine over here, Squaw Valley over here. It's the installation of an eight, a proposal for an installation of eight-passenger gondola, which would connect the two ski areas. The terminals, the two bigger terminals, would be located between Roundhouse Express and Hot Wheels Chair at the Alpine side over here, and then between KT 22 and the Squaw One Lifts at Squaw Valley over here. It does include two mid-stations. One would be at the Saddle Ridge at Squaw, and I'm not totally sure where it is on this map, but there would be one midstation there, and then also another midstation on private lands near the Betris at Alpine, on the Alpine side. And I, again, I don't, I guess that would be here and here, actually. There you go. So, it does cross, the alignment of, of the gondola crosses private lands, although it does, it's adjacent to public lands, specifically the Granite Chief Wilderness area. And so, we have been in strong, you know, not strong, excuse me, close coordination with the U.S. Forest Service on that. And they are preparing, there'll be an EIR and an EIS, which is an environmental impact statement prepared. So, it'll be a joint document. The, the EIR portion that's being run through the county is really a focused, we see it as a focused environmental document. It'll focus out on traffic impacts, greenhouse gas and air quality impacts, and visual. And then also, just that, that whole notion of, you know, we're going back and forth on, does it increase ridership? Or is it really just maintaining skier base? So, that all will be analyzed in the environmental document. It does include a, a general plan amendment to the Squaw Valley general plan. And I'm going to turn to Paul. I'm not sure if it includes a general plan for the Alpine. No, so, so... Okay. In the Squaw Valley, excuse me, I'm getting over a cold. The Squaw Valley General Plan, it requires an amendment to show another lift. So, this would be considered, the gondola would be considered a lift, and so there would be an amendment to the Squaw Valley General Plan. And then it also would be a conditional use permit. So, this, again, would be something that would come before your commission for consideration. The project was submitted in October. We are currently working on a three-party contract to execute the, and want to execute that contract as for the preparation of the EIR. And we have had meetings, environmental meetings already started with the U.S. Forest Service and the respective consultants. A kickoff meeting on the preparation of the environmental document is expected in February. And then we will have, it's been decided that we'll have joint scoping meetings with the U.S. Forest Service on this, because it does need to be approved by the U.S. Forest Service, so, yes.
Is, is any of that going to be on national forest land? Any of the lift?
I believe it does cross, yeah, and that's the reason it's going, it's going through the Forest Service, although it's, it's outside of the wilderness area, but it's, I'm pretty sure Paul, it's adjacent to, adjacent to the, it's adjacent to the U.S. Forest Service land.
So...
My apologies.
I'm wondering, you like the, I think the base area of Alpine Meadows is national forest, right?
You know, I'm not sure. Sorry. I'm not, I'm not the project planner on this, and, and I apologize if I don't have all the answers, but Paul may be able to help.
Why don't you come up here to the, and help, when you have another question, be right next to her. Yes, please. You're aiming for the record.
Paul Thompson, Community Development, Tahoe. Okay, so, this is Squaw Valley property. This is the Granite Chief Wilderness here. This is private land. This is Troy Caldwell's property, and then here is, this is Alpine Meadows. I don't believe, I know this, I think this is Forest Service land here. I think this is private, because this is where the, the ski resort's at, the parking lot. So, I believe, I can't verify that, that this is private land.
I suspect that this gear is, is a special use permit with the U.S. Forest Service?
I know there are portions of the resort that are on Forest Service land that there's a special use permit.
So, I guess, I guess I'm kind of wondering, I guess the reason an EIS is being required is because part of it must be on national forest.
And, and what I understand is because of its very close proximity to the Granite Chief Wilderness. That's what I understand, too.
But we will get you answers. We can, we can check into that and get back to you.
Well, it's not, you know, just a relationship. I'm glad that the Forest Service is involved in this, but the relationship and what the actual...
Yeah, well, typically speaking, if they're requiring an, an environmental impact statement, it would be because it crosses their land.
Right.
So, it's possible that this area over here, you know, may be U.S. Forest Service. I'm not sure. But this will be something that'll come, you know, before your commission for consideration, but we can certainly get that answer to you ahead of time.
Okay. Well, it's, it's a minor point, but the reason we're doing...
It's a good, it's a really good question.
Yeah, we probably need to state why we're doing an EIS accurately.
Yes.
Which is fine, you know, I mean, I think that's fine that you do that, and coordination is good, too.
We agree. Okay, so, on to what's called the White Wolf Subdivision. This is, this is not a formal application yet, so they came in for what's called a pre-development meeting. They submitted a pre-development application, really just outlines what their thoughts are for development, and so we met with them. They appear to be very serious about this project. It's a, it's an application to create 38 single-family lots, so subdivision on 44 acres situated a half mile north of the Alpine Meadows Ski Resort. So, again, right in Alpine Meadows. The lots would range between half an acre to one and a half acres in size. It would include a clubhouse lodge and a chairlift, and then seasonal recreational facilities, including tennis and equestrian facilities. At this point, what we have heard is that that is, would be private. So, the resort itself would be, would be private. So, this is really kind of, it's, it's interesting. It's sort of in between, it's on the Alpine side, but between, in between Squaw and, and Alpine. So, we don't, that's really all we know about this right now. We do know that they, they're looking into environmental consultants, and I believe have selected one, but they haven't submitted a formal application. So, we don't have a whole lot to review yet in, on this project, but wanted to bring, bring it to your attention. It would require the preparation of an EIR.
Crystal, question. The little, little markings I see, there are little hatches. That's the area of the subdivision?
Yes, yeah, this area in here.
Looks like a gerrymandered district for a congressional district. Look at that thing.
It's a little, it's a little, yeah, it's a little odd.
Do you know the zoning on that right now?
I don't know the zoning. I don't have that with me, actually. Maybe I do. Maybe it's in the... Hold on a second.
You think?
No, I don't have, I don't have the zoning in front of me. I don't have the, the pre-development application. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look over at Paul again. Do you know the zoning on that?
Current zoning, current zoning.
Current zoning on a large portion of the property is open space. So, there is, there is two building sites that are zoned for, for residential development that were... So, this will require a rezoning as well as a, an amendment to the Alpine Meadows General Plan.
Looks like the gondola, the gondola and the chairlift are gonna, they can wave each other while they're going by?
What we understand, this, this is a continuing developing project description. It appears that they will share at least a tower, so they will intersect at a tower. The midstation, we don't think they're gonna intersect at the midstation, which is the angle station. One of the angle stations on the gondola. But they will, what they've told us, they will share one of the towers. They gotta have a set point to where they don't, during high winds, they don't come close to each other. So, they gotta make sure and keep them apart.
So, you, so you lost me. Is there a chairlift involved in this?
Yes.
There is.
This would be the chairlift, right? Right in here.
Right, up and down the runway there, like? Is that where it's gonna be?
Right in here, uh-huh.
Right in there.
And this one, too?
Yes.
So, more to come on this as, as they actually, you know, get closer.
Looks like there'll be more coordination with the Forest Service on this one, too.
Likely.
Yes.
Public input on open space.
Okay, on to Plump Jack Inn. So, this is in, in Squaw Valley, and right near the village there, right in the village, kind of in the heart of the village area. It's a proposal to demolish the existing Plump Jack Squaw Valley Inn and Conference Buildings. So, it's really a kind of a redevelopment of that, of that site. And it would replace that with a new hotel building, underground parking garage, and a three-story resident, in a three-story residential building and a four-story residential building with a pool and outdoor eating area. So, we have prepare, we are preparing an EIR for this, and we're, this, again, we're currently working internally to review the administrative draft EIR, and, you know, have been in some ongoing discussions, too, with the Squaw Valley Public Service District on largely water supply. And then we expect a draft environmental document out in early spring as well. So, again, another, there's a lot of projects kind of coming down the pipe here.
This is completely separate from the Squaw Valley plan that we're still...
Yes.
Still to come to us. It's, it's, is it, are those in? Yeah, they're, they're way different, but I would think that, well, the EIR will, will...
Yeah, the, the EIRs have to address cumulative impacts, so they take the other projects that are in the process into consideration in the analysis, so. Okay, this is a really great project, and I've got Andy Fisher from Parks here, in case you have any questions on, on this one. This is a Squaw Valley Olympic Museum proposal, and this was, it's not a formal application as well. They came in for a pre-development, so this would include a new 15,000 square foot public museum and heritage center at the existing Squaw Valley Community Park. So, that's located, here's kind of a faded-out aerial, but right on 89 here. The site, that park that's right on kind of the corner of 89 and Squaw Valley Road. The facility would house a main exhibit hall, a multipurpose theater, an archive facility, catering kitchen, offices, and a bookstore. So, they did, they came in in January for a pre-development meeting to talk to staff about, about the project. The applicant is the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation, and so right now, they're working to prepare a formal application, which will then go under review by our staff. It will require a zoning text amendment to the Squaw Valley General Plan and a conditional use permit. It will be the entitlements that'll be requested. So, again, this one will come before your commission as well. So, I know Parks has been working with the foundation, you know, hand in hand on this project. So, if you had any questions on that, Andy wanted to come so he could answer questions if you had any, but we're excited about this one.
Is, is this one gonna be built on county property?
I, I think that the, or the park is county property, right? Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, on to the Village at Squaw Valley. I've got a lot of slides on this. And I know this was before your commission to accept comments on the draft EIR not too long ago, but I'll just kind of walk you through, through this again real quick. So, this is an amendment to the Squaw Valley General Plan and Land Use Ordinances to comprehensively plan the development of a recreation-based, all-season resort community. So, it would include 850 fractional ownership resort, residential, and guest accommodation units, including, it's up to 1,493 bedrooms is what they're looking at. It includes hotels, con, hotels, condo hotels, semi-attached and detached fractional ownership residential properties. It would develop new employee housing for up to 300 total employees, including two, two, about 200 new full-time equivalent employees plus replacement housing for 900 employees that would relocate from the main village. So, so they're taking into consideration the existing employees, but also assuming 200 new employees and, and housing those employees. It proposes commercial, retail, and recreational uses similar to the ones that are currently allowed under the Squaw Valley General Plan and Land Use Ordinances. So, those would include skier facilities, retail shopping, restaurants, and bars, entertainment, and public and private recreational facilities. It establishes a new traffic circulation pattern, pedestrian paths and trails, open space stream protection corridor along portions of Squaw Creek within the project boundary. And so, that would really include a comprehensive, comprehensive stream restoration of Squaw Creek, which, you know, really aligns with the county's goals in restoring that area. We've been working through our plaster legacy program to do that, and so this really goes hand in hand with those efforts. It also includes a stream protection corridor, which would have interpretive, an interpretive park, a class-one trail, a stream observation deck, and interpretive kiosks. And then, in addition to that, some restoration of the Olympic Channel, which is a smaller tributary that enters the stream immediate to the east of that. So, really kind of creating, recreating wetlands and restoring the natural stream system for Squaw Creek.
What's the, what, what does the red line indicate again?
You, you guys have good questions today for me. I, it's about, oh, you know, that's a pop-out, and I'll show you that pop-out area here in just a minute. But I can't, I can't tell. It's, it doesn't say on there exactly what it is. It's not identified, but I'll, I have some other slides here. In just a minute, I'll get to. So, this, in October, it was before your commi, your commission to receive comments on the draft EIR. And so, since that time, we've been responding to those comments. We had over 350 comments, so it's been an effort. But we've been working with the consultants on that. We do expect the final environmental document out in April, and then it would be before your commission for deliberations on the project. And then after that, it would, it would go on to the board. So, we're getting very close on this one. But before we get too farther in that, let me, let just show you some other, this is a, the, a conceptual, illustrative conceptual plan. And so, this area right here, I think, was the one that was in red, and so let's, let's take a look. Oh, and there's just an, an idea, sort of a concept of what it would look like in terms of the elevation. So, here, so this is that pop-out. So, this, this one, and let me go back here. I got some notes from the project. Alex Fish in our office has been the lead on this project, doing a really great job facilitating this through the process. And he gave me some notes here. So, this one right here was what was released in the draft, the site plan. It includes employee housing, a fitness center, and a market. So, the market was right here. And some structured parking, which you see here, and then a class-one trail connection, which is right along here. And then, but this has been revised based on some input. which is right along here. Um, and then, but this has been revised based on some input we received and the comments that we received during, you know, the environmental document, um, and really working with, um, Squaw Valley community, um, to come up with something that is, um, you know, agreeable in terms of design. So this is a revised east parcel layout. Um, it includes, the employee housing has been relocated to the central portion of the site, so you can see it right here. Um, and then you have your parking facility here. Um, and the circulation pattern for shipping and receiving has been revised so that delivery trucks don't have to, to back up. It had to do with like noise, the alarms on delivery trucks, and really trying to look at compatibility with, uh, with neighboring properties. And so they, they came up with.
Crystal, you're losing me here. Can you go back to the other map and show me on it where the red lines are, where this is? Keep going. Now, where, the last slide that you showed, where is that right there?
It's not on this.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Did I answer your question?
This is what happens when I, I come to provide an overview of projects that I'm not directly leading.
That's, that's okay. I just was wondering if it was just me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is lower down at the valley.
Yes.
Oh, hey, Alex.
Hi.
Well, there is, I didn't see.
I, I was watching, and I wanted to make sure that we were clear on, on a couple of things. So I'm gonna back up and orient everyone real quickly. Um, this is the project as it was originally proposed about four years ago. We're well past this point. This is not a current graphic. This is, this is where we stand today. This is a revised illustrative concept plan, um, that will be circulated in the updated, um, two thou, April two thousand sixteen, uh, Village at Squaw Valley specific plan that will be circulated concurrent with the circulation of the final E I R. And what it shows principally here of note is, in comparison to the, uh, April two thousand fifteen version that the draft E I R was based on, is that this village commercial core area has been substantially opened up. There's a lot more pedestrian plaza, open space between the buildings. Um, the scale of the buildings has been brought down, the shoulder areas, they stepped down now. Uh, the buildings have been reduced, uh, in overall height as well as mass. There's about two hundred thousand square feet of reductions to these buildings in this area. We have some other.
Alex, just a question before you go on.
Yes, sir.
You said that, that's, the heights have been reduced. What are, what are the heights now, uh, in the new proposal?
In the new proposal, uh, they top out, like, these buildings are ninety-four feet. Um, some of these buildings here, buildings three and four, I believe, off the top of my head, are around eighty-four feet.
So nine to ten stories, basically, around in there?
Well, as far as the, the story count is different. It's actually more like six, you know.
Okay, so they got some heights.
The, the plate heights and, and the podium that, that they're built upon. Um, the Mountain Adventure, uh, Center still has a one hundred and eight-foot tall portion right about here, but the rest of the building has been brought down to seventy-two feet. So that said, um, as we go forward, this again, this was part of the original proposal. The buildings are much more, uh, in keeping with, uh, the mountain aesthetic now. Their, their, uh, lodge style as opposed to this is more of an, uh, what I would call a little bit of an urban flair. And beyond that, I think, Crystal, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on, on that one little issue, and I think you've.
I appreciate it.
Got it.
Well, Alex, while you were up there, on the housing that's now been moved.
Yes.
Is it still the same amount of rooms?
Same amount, uh, up to three hundred employees, beds. Um, two hundred of those would be, uh, new beds, and the hundred would be replacement of existing, uh, employee dormitory units that are currently located within the village area.
Let me see, one time, a question, too. One time, it sounded like TRPA was kind of extending their reach in considering whether this is part of their jurisdiction or what their status would be with it. Is that still here?
Yeah, you know, I'm gonna speak to that later, because it, it, it kind of relates to the area plan as well, and so I'm just gonna talk about where we're at with TRPA and their, they did, they did submit comment letters, so I'll get to that a little bit later.
All right.
Because they also commented on, on the Mardis Valley West. I wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at with that. So, and my apologies for not knowing everything about this project. Thank you, Alex.
That's why you have support behind you there.
Yeah, I did, I know. I appreciate it immensely.
That's why we have a little bit out there.
Okay, so on to the, uh, on to the.
Crystal, we have one more.
Before you leave Highway eighty-nine.
Yes.
Um, and I know this will come out in the E I Rs, but is, are any of these projects gonna try to address the issue on eighty-nine in that you basically have a two-lane road that has real physical limitations to being able to widen and deal with additional traffic? So, I, again, I know the E I Rs will address that, but I, you know, the cumulative impact as we kind of progress through these E I Rs, I mean, there's gonna be, I think, a huge impact on eighty-nine.
Right. Um, well, the, each E I R is, is addressing traffic impacts, um, related to that project, and so, and, and mitigating those impacts. Um, but back to the, to the TRPA, because that was really the concern that came up from TRPA, and so we have been working with TRPA, uh, to talk about what the county is doing over and above each project, right, in terms of dealing with, um, traffic impacts, um, in and around, really, the, the Tahoe, uh, region, including eighty-nine and two sixty-seven. Um, and so we recognize it, you know, when, when you're talking about specifics, which each project is doing, I can't really speak to that. Alex would, would certainly know more about Squaw in terms of traffic, um, how we're mitigating impacts on eighty-nine. Um, but I can talk about, and I'll, and I'll do that again when I, um, towards the end, when I'm talking about the area plan, in terms of what we're doing regionally to deal with these larger, uh, traffic issue, on a cumulative, cumulative, cumulative level, what we're doing. So, but I, but I understand, I understand where you're going with that. We have a lot of, um, a lot of activity, you know, happening, and, you know, the E I Rs are required to, um, recognize other developments going through the process. So, you know, Squaw's looking at other projects that are, um, being proposed in and around that area on a cumulative level. Um, and, and as well as, you know, Mardis Valley's specific plan is doing the same thing. Um, but the county is really looking at, um, it, for solutions to larger sort of regional transportation, um, issues in, in the basin.
Again, the challenge is that there are some real limitations to trying to increase the capacity of the ability to have more capacity on those, both those roads.
Right. I think, you know, we're really focusing on transit. So getting people out of the cars, I think, is really, is, is where we're going with that, because I do think that there are limitations on particularly Highway eighty-nine, you know, you're dealing with.
Has that ever been?
A limited.
Has that ever been done successfully?
The transit piece?
Right.
Where, um, I think we've shown success, and we're hoping for, you know, more success is, is the plan. That's where we want to go in terms of increased ridership. Um, and so, and service, increased service and increased ridership, particularly in the winter months. Um, and so that's, uh, really where, and, and I'll talk a little bit about that, what our, what our plan is moving forward in that regard.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the Brockway Campground. We're now over on the Mardis side, and this is, as I had talked about earlier, is right off of Highway, uh, two sixty-seven in the basin, so this project is in the basin. Um, it's a proposal, excuse me, for up to five hundred and fifty campsites located on a hundred and twenty acres, um, near the Brockway Summit. Um, the campsites would include a mix of traditional, uh, tent sites, camper sites, and then what they call eco-shelters. Some people call this glamping, I guess, is, is the terminology, glamour camping. I don't, um, I've never really, I think, probably similar to what you see maybe in Curry Village and Yosemite, that kind of thing. Um, and so other facilities include a registration building, a lodge amenities, swimming pool, restrooms, a pavilion, and onsite parking. Um, this is very new and in the, in the process, um, and so we are preparing a scope of work, uh, and contract for the preparation of environmental, um, impact report, environmental impact statement. This is a, um, a, a project that will require TRPA review, and so TRPA is a party to that contract, and so they're currently reviewing that right now. So that's where, where we're at with that. Uh, more to come on this. There's been, you know, considerable, um, input received, um, by the community on this. A lot of folks are not, not that excited about it, so, but it certainly will make its way, you know, through the process and, um, and have an opportunity to, you know, to vet, um, the project merits, so.
Crystal, when I saw this, when I saw this map and the, and the number of, I'm, I'm, I have a small trailer, and I.
Uh-huh.
Camping both tent and now a little trailer. I can understand why, when we were discussing that Mardis Valley projects, or at least, uh, the E I R, whatever, why people kept referring to this one, because I didn't realize it was so big, but it's, it's, it's a pretty significant number of units up on that hill. I'm sure the E I R is gonna have to address that.
Yes.
Another road that's pretty hard to, to widen out, in fact, more, a little harder than probably, uh, eighty-nine.
Yeah, this is a really, um, I've never, I've never seen anything like it in terms of the scale of campground, right?
Yeah.
But it, it will, like I said, it will require, you know, board approval and TRPA governing board approval, and so I think there'll be a lot more to come on this, on this project.
I guess I have another. You're gonna talk about TRPA later.
Uh-huh, yes. I could talk now if you, if you'd like, if you have questions about it.
Well, there for a while I was understanding that, uh, the relationship, uh, T, TRPA was working on a plan, or, yeah, a plan for the basin.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, at least what I was understanding is now TRPA was going to, uh, basically rely on the jurisdictional, uh, processes to develop the plans, and then the TRPA would be the appeal authority. Has that changed, or has it not changed?
Um, so TRPA developed their, an update to their regional plan. Um, and so that was actually adopted by their board in two thousand and twelve. Um, it did not, initially, uh, years back, they had looked at actually, um, diving into establishing zoning, like, um, creating zone districts and really kind of getting their hands down in the nuts and bolts of planning. They pulled back on that because they wanted to, you know, it was kind of bogging them down, and they needed to get to adoption. And so when they did that, um, the idea was that local jurisdictions would come in with area plans in an effort to implement the regional plan. And so that's really what the Tahoe Basin Area Plan does. Um, although, you know, I will say the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, along with all other area plans in the basin, um, are joint documents. So TRPA has, you know, ownership of, with our document. They're, they're a party to the document, a party to the environmental document, and so we're really working, it's a partnership, really, in terms of, um, setting land use, you know, and, and guiding, guiding land use in the basin. But the intent is that it would, um, implement the TRPA regional plan.
And so, well, at any rate, it was, you know, when you're trying to explain it to somebody that doesn't anything about the basin, you know, and then, uh, you know, somebody that wants to do something in the basin like this project needs to go with the county and get the county board of supervisors, then I think urgently they're gonna have to make the same presentation to TRPA and get the TPRA board.
Yes.
So that really hasn't changed then.
No, I see where you're going. Okay. So the regional plan, um, what they did in the regional plan is that they have delegated a little more authority to the local jurisdictions in terms of land use. That's, I think, where you're going. Um, it's, I would say that it's not a whole lot different than what we have under today's, uh, code and under today's plans. So, um, they've established a threshold. So if a project is over a certain size, um, then it, then it is required to go to both bodies, the TRPA, you know, governing body in Placer County, either the commission or the board, whatever the, you know, depends on the project. Um, that threshold, I mean, it's, it's pretty low, to be honest. Um, it's really, for those projects is kind of redevelopment projects where you're not, um, you're not changing the footprint. Any larger project would be required to go to the TRPA, just as it does today. For example, the Tahoe City Lodge Project, which I'll talk about here in a minute, it's a redevelopment project, but it's also a little, it's an expanse, expansion of uses, and that is, has to go before the TRPA board and, and Placer. So I would say any, any larger scaled kind of redevelopment or new development project would still have to go to TRPA. The smaller ones are, you know, you have an existing building that, I believe it's, um, I'm trying to think of the, the square footage, it's pretty small in terms of what could be approved by Placer and not have to go on to TRPA. So they did change it a little bit, but for these larger projects, there's not a whole lot of change there.
Okay, and so, and also, you're probably gonna talk about the community plan that's going on up.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
So that, uh, that probably won't have any effect on what we just talked about there.
Um, no, because we have to come in under the parameters of the regional plan. So no, it does not change that. So, so our area plan has to be consistent with the regional plan. So they set that parameter in terms of the threshold of, you know, which projects go to TRPA and which projects don't. TRPA established that, and the area plan has to be consistent with, with those parameters that they established. It's, so it's, I know it's a hard one to grasp, but let me tell you about this one, though.
Okay.
So this one, um, well, no, don't, no, I mean, just in the sense of, it's how it goes through the process. So this one is interesting because it is actually consistent with the allowed uses under today's plan. Um, and so in these areas, areas outside of what we call the town centers, or the kind of those urbanized areas in the basin, um, those areas really haven't changed a lot in, in terms of the, the, the update, right, the update that we're working on. Um, and this is a good example of this. This is up on the, you know, it's, it's really kind of up on that ridge, that two sixty-seven ridge, the Brockway area. And, um, that area is not changing in our area plan. So all the uses that were allowed under today's plan, under today's code, is literally just being carried over, no changes under the area plan that, that I'm working on. The only, the changes in the area plan that you're gonna see are largely related to, you know, those town centers. So Tahoe City and Kings Beach is really where you're gonna see those changes. So this one's unique. I mean, the, the process for this that, um, exists right now under today's code is the same as the area plan, and, um, so they, they are required to go to T, uh, Placer, um, under today's code and TRPA, and it'll be the exact same thing after the area plan's adopted for this project.
Sure.
Okay, I think I, I think I finished that one. So another big one, uh, that's making its way through the process is the Mardis Valley West project. This is what I referred to earlier as a transfer of density, so it's, it is a specific plan. And the idea here, the proposal is to, under the, the existing Mardis Valley Community Plan that has been adopted by our board, um, there's a whole lot of density, um, over here on the east side. So for those of you familiar with, you know, the Mardis Valley, Highway, uh, two sixty-seven, this is kind of where the Waddle Ranch is, that area that we put into, um, uh, open space in perpetuity, which was a, a really great, um, project. So this area, there's a whole lot of density right up, you know, behind that. And so the proposal is to transfer that density over here, um, to the west side where, you know, there's a, uh, the development, there's already an established development pattern there, um, in and around North Star. So it includes, um, these two components, the east and the west parcels. Um, it would include an amendment to the Mardis Valley Community Plan, um, and a specific plan to identify where, to identify this development pattern on this property, and the densities associated, um, with that, um, also the infrastructure. Um, excuse me. The density transfer includes seventy, seven hundred and seventy-five acres of the west, um, parcel rezoned from timberland production, um, to allow for seven hundred and sixty residential uses, and then six point six acres of commercial. So that's what you would see on this side. The remaining three hundred and forty-five acres on the west parcel would remain, um, designated as forest. Um, six hundred and sixty acres on the east parcel currently zoned for development. So again, this, these units here would be re-designated as forest. Uh, the remaining six hundred units, um, of the thirteen hundred and sixty. So right now, it has a density which, you know, you could potentially get thirteen hundred and sixty units. Um, so those remaining six hundred units, um, for that area would be retired. So the, so, so you have a whole lot of density over here, some of it's being transferred over, the rest of it's being retired, and then this land would go into, um, um, public. It would, it would be, you know, the idea is that you would have an expansive, um, area for public, uh, use, open space, um, from Waddle Ranch all the way over to Mount Rose. So, so that's, that's what the transfer is about. Um, and it would include, the public lands would be about six thousand three hundred and seventy-six acres of public lands as part of this proposal.
By public lands, you mean the public's gonna buy them, or?
You know, I'm not sure what the mechanism is for that, that transfer and who would take ownership of it, but the, that is the idea, is that those lands would go into the public trust. Um, and, you know, I'm guessing that the, the Truckee Donner Land Trust is probably involved in this, um, but I'm not sure who the entity would be. But that is the proposal, is that those lands would be, the density would be retired, and the lands would go into, uh, the public trust.
Have those, have those acres, you know, there's a, some of it, I guess, is TPZ, so has, has the TPZ part of it been through the countdown process?
Um, I, I think it's an immediate rezone of TPZ, and, and with the idea that you're putting lands into, you know, it's that public benefit, um, piece, and, um, and so that's all being analyzed through, through this process. I don't know that they actually submitted, uh, did the countdown, and I'm gonna turn to Michael and see if he, or Paul, Michael.
I think they, the east side did go through a countdown, and that, it has been returned to forest.
Okay.
That concluded in two thousand thirteen.
But the west side, I think, is a, an immediate, proposal for immediate.
So if the west side is in a TPZ, then are they gonna transfer that, or just? So if the west side is in a TPZ, then are they gonna transfer that, or just somehow get out of it?
Um, it would be a proposal for an immediate rezoning to get out of it, with the idea, though, that you, you're setting aside an enormous amount of land on the east side for, for public, for the public trust.
So that would require, what, board supervisors as well as?
The state board of forestry.
State board of forestry?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, do you have a question?
So in terms of-
Just so I'm sure, clear on it, the west parcel, where it says 1,063 acres, or something like that?
Yes.
That's where the new residential and commercial zoning would be applicable?
Yeah, right over here, and I have another map to show you. This is just the land, the land use map, so it's proposed single-family residential, some multifamily, and then some neighborhood commercial. And then the green area is the forest land right here. So this is State Route 267, along in here.
Okay, should I go back to the previous slide?
Uh huh. So that, that little blow up is right-
Okay, is this the striped?
Right in here.
The one that looks exactly like the Tahoe National Forest, only it's down below 267?
This one, it's not the, it's this here, this little gray area.
Okay, I've got you, that's what I was-
Yeah, so it's, it's really, again, it's, you know, on, it's, the idea is that it's on the west side where you, you have, you know, a development pattern already.
And that's where the TPZ is?
Yeah, there's some, there's some TPZ there, yes. So in terms of where this is at in the process, the draft EIR was released in October. Again, your commission held a hearing to receive comments on, on that document, and we're currently responding to those comments as well. And then we expect a final on this document here in the spring, and again, that would come to your commission for deliberations on that, and then, and then to the board as well. And so this is really, you know, in terms of timing, it's, it's kind of running the same course as the Squaw Valley Specific Plan. So two kind of big, specific plans that are, in terms of timing, kind of running, running right along one another. So another project, this is the Tahoe Expedition Academy, and the applicant here is the Martis Valley Education Foundation. This is a proposal to develop a permanent educational institution for approximately 350 students, ranging from pre-K to the 12th grade. This property consists of about 42 acres, is located a quarter mile southwest of the intersection of 267. This is a terrible map, again, I'm sorry, but it is located in the Martis Valley, right off 267 there. So it's, it's near Highway 267 and Schaefer's Mill Road in the Martis Valley area. It would include four phases. The first phase would be the school buildings and maintenance buildings is what they would construct. The second phase would be administrative buildings, a theater, music shops, greenhouse, and the playfield. The third would be some more school buildings and a cafe. And then the final phase would include dormitories, the construction of dormitories, and some teacher residences. So after all the phases were constructed, this would provide a mix of one to two-story buildings, including the classrooms, training facilities, common areas, and on-site parking. Excuse me. And then the dormitories would hold up to about 40 students. So not, they don't anticipate all the students being housed here, it would just be some, some of the students. This application was submitted in October, and so we've been, you know, reviewing that project application internally, preparing environmental documents. And we are targeting a March Planning Commission hearing is what we're shooting for, so you will likely see this one come before your commission next month, is what we're, is what we're shooting for. We're still sorting out a couple, couple issues with it, but it's, it's moving forward.
On that, besides that one on March 24th, potentially, what else do you think might come before? Is how many items, I mean, of the projects you've talked to are more coming, maybe on the 24th?
Yeah, I don't know that we have anything else tentatively scheduled on the 24th. Do you know, EJ?
Yeah, I don't, there, there may be, I know there's one or two other smaller projects that may be ready. But we, we should really look at that hearing, because that, that might also be an opportunity if the commissioners are interested in doing a, a tour of one of the larger sites, either Squaw Valley or Martis Valley. If you have interest in doing that, we can, you know, maybe do a morning, morning hearing, and then afternoon tour. So if there's interest, let me know, I can arrange that. You know, I mean, I just, you know, you can see the complexity of projects up in the Tahoe area, and the timing of, you know, all these getting through the environmental review process and ready for hearing in the next year. So whatever we can do to, you know, make that process easier for you and get you more acclimated to what's proposed, you know, we're happy to do that, so.
That's what I was thinking.
So I have a question, just, I'm still having a hard time figuring out where this is.
Okay, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna go way back, so bear with me here. I'm gonna go back to our initial slide that showed location. So here you go, you've got the north Tahoe, you know, region area, what we call the resort triangle, right here. So Truckee, Tahoe City, and Kings Beach, and so the academy is right here. And so it's on 267, in the Martis Valley area, off of Schaefer's Mill Road.
Where's the airport?
The airport is right over here.
So it's across the street?
It's basically in Truckee. I mean, it's not in the town itself.
It's, yeah, so this is Nevada County, but this is also the town of Truckee, right in here.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
But back to EJ's comment, that's what I was thinking, is if our agenda on the 24th is somewhat light and not lengthy items, that maybe after the meeting, a way back or whatever, we could drive through some of those.
Absolutely. I mean, if the commission has interest in doing that, which, that sounds like what I'm hearing.
It's not snowing, EJ.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be helpful.
That would, yeah. We'll put a request in for good weather that day for you. Okay, so, so on to the Tahoe Basin area. So, I wish I should have pointed this out, but this is in Tahoe City. This is called the Tahoe City Lodge. This is a redevelopment of an existing commercial complex, right there in the core of Tahoe City. Otherwise known, for those folks that have, that are familiar with Tahoe, it used to be known as the Henrickson Building. It's the building when you're coming into Tahoe City, headed in kind of towards Kings Beach, that's on the left, that has a bright blue circular staircase right up front. Have you, it's like a two-story building, little, kind of a little funky, a little dilapidated. So we are actually excited about this, because, you know, we're really trying to get reinvestment in the Tahoe Basin as part of the area plan and implementing the regional plan. So this is, this is a great project. So again, a redevelopment of an existing commercial complex, it includes 120-unit condo, hotel, a mix of one to two-bedroom suites, hotel amenities, and parking. It would also include a redevelopment of the existing Tahoe City Golf Course Clubhouse. And then there would be some shared parking, access, mobility improvements. So the idea is to have some trails that connect, and really to try to bring that golf course piece, integrate it into the town center, and just create a more kind of walkable community. And so this is, this is really trying to, to meet that goal.
Where's the golf course, right there?
Um, right here. This whole thing is the golf course, right in here. This is the clubhouse, right here.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me. So this parking, it would all be shared.
And what's, what's the acreage on this?
Um, you know, I don't have that in front of me.
Might be, but I can't read this one.
Oh, gosh, Paul? I can't remember the acreage. I'm sorry. I know this piece right up here in the golf course is 1.6 acres, and, but I don't remember exactly the, the total acreage of-
Am I hearing three acres?
Three, three, yeah. So, so that actually is being analyzed as part of the Tahoe Basin Area Plan EIR, which I'll speak to next, and talk about where, where we're at with that. But we're expecting a draft environmental impact report out on this, and the area plan concurrently, they would be together, and we're expecting that in the spring. And I actually have a little bit more about that overall schedule here in a minute, but our board directed us to look at this project, and, not look at it, but to analyze it as part of the area plan environmental impact report. Although it will have its own kind of separate analysis that's being funded by the applicant, but at the end of the day, the environmental document for the area plan will have various sections on the Tahoe City Lodge. And the reason for this is because they are coming in under the proposed development standards that are in the area plan. So the area plan includes some increased density and increased height in the town center. And so this is really kind of a concept plan, like what, what, you know, under, under those provisions that would be adopted as part of the area plan, what could you do? And so this project had come in kind of right around the time we were processing the area plan, and our board thought it would be beneficial to look at the two of them together. So this really would, the, the idea is that it would be implementing the area plan at the end of the day. So that's kind of why we did it that way. And so they, they've really been kind of running concurrently, the Tahoe City Lodge Project and the area plan.
See, I have a question. Golf course, you know, I forget actually who owns the golf course.
The Tahoe, well, the Tahoe City Public Utility District owns the golf course. But what's interesting about the golf course is that it was funded not too many years ago by a partnership. And the county is actually one of the partners that funded the golf course. And, and the reason the county was interested in investing in the golf course had to do with improving some mobility in the town center, and really looking for opportunities to specifically expand a parking area on Grove Street, which the golf course is right behind Grove Street. And so the county is interested in, and this is, you know, policy actually that exists in the community plan today, is to look for opportunities to improve mobility and expand parking opportunities there in town. And so, so we were a partner in, in the purchase of the golf course, although the golf course is owned, entitled by the utility district.
Okay. So the buildings that are on the golf course, who's gonna own those, or they're gonna?
I'm sorry, the buildings around?
Looks like there's a, a building that's gonna go-
The clubhouse.
A clubhouse?
Right now, there's this real small little clubhouse on the golf course, and so as part of this plan, they would, they would essentially relocate it slightly. It would, it's like right here, right now, and it's, it'll just be pushed back, and then it'll have a second story on it with conference facilities. So it would be kind of a redevelopment of that clubhouse facility. But that's the only piece of this, this project. There's, you know, most of the golf course is on what's called stream environmental zone property, so it's, it's sensitive habitat, it's, it's a stream zone, essentially, and you can't, you know, under TRPA's regulation, you really can't develop the golf course. And so the idea here is, when, when this applicant comes forward with the PUD, they're actually gonna be restoring some areas of the golf course. So there's a restoration component.
What's the clubhouse's purpose gonna be?
It'll be the same, it'll be to serve the golf course, but again-
Still golfing there, then?
Oh, yeah, the golfing will stay, yeah. They had, when, when the golf course was purchased, there was a lot of outreach that was done and workshops, and they heard from the community that, you know, the community wants the golf course to stay. And so that's the intent. The community did want some additional recreational amenities, including a lot of, a lot of talk about an ice rink or bocce ball, and so the PUD is looking at, you know, you know, those opportunities where they can get them, but it will stay recreation, yes.
Okay.
I was gonna add something on that. Oh, and then again, the restoration piece is, is pretty big, too. So the vision, you know, the community's vision is really to try to, as best as you can, integrate the golf course. They see it as an amenity, and, you know, a lot of people drive through Tahoe City and don't even know it's there. And so the idea is, is how can you kind of make it a part of the town? So with that, I'm gonna go on to kind of talk about where we're at with the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. So we released a, a public review draft area plan and a notice of preparation for the environmental document back in June in 2015. That was out for a 60-day public review. So that area plan, you know, it's been, this, this project has been in the works for a number of years, and we've really been working with TRPA, and had worked, you know, before that was released, we had worked hand-in-hand with TRPA to come up with a document that they believed, you know, implements their regional plan. And so that's important to note. It is a document that focuses on outlining an environmental enhancement strategy to implement the regional plan, and really, the whole goal is achievement of environmental threshold gain. And so they, so this document that was released is a joint document, so it was jointly released with TRPA and Placer. After we received comments on the notice of preparation, we did, hold, excuse me, go back. We held scoping meetings during that period, also produced a scoping summary report. And then after receiving comments, we developed a range of alternatives to analyze in the EIR, and TRPA wanted those, that range to go before their governing board. So we actually took the environmental alternatives that we were looking to analyze to their governing board for concurrence, and, and just some, you know, feedback. And in general, the governing board was real happy with where the area plan is, and they concurred with, with the approach that we had. So it was a little bit, took a little longer than the normal process, because we had to go through these TRPA steps. But, and so that was in September that we did that. And so since September is really when, you know, the preparation of the environmental document, that's when it started, and we've been doing that since September. Excuse me. In addition, we also received comments on the area plan document itself during that public review period. Most of the comments were related to transit and mobility, you know, and looking at, how are we gonna deal with, how are we gonna improve mobility and, and transit in the, in the basin area. And so we have been working with TRPA staff to make some refinements to the area plan, to really better demonstrate and, and show what we're, what the county's doing. Namely, one of them is, is the Fanny Bridge State Route 89 Revitalization Project, and, and, because that had gotten adopted during this process. And so we folded in that, those concepts and into the area plan to, to show, you know, what that's gonna do there to the town center of Tahoe City, and really improve, improving traffic flow. In addition, there's some other mobility efforts underway, and I'm gonna show you some slides on those. One is called the Tahoe City Mobility Plan, and so we're folding that into the area plan as well. So there's all, you know, a lot going on in terms of transit and mobility efforts in the basin, and, and so we're trying to kind of tie it all in and pull it in and make some refinements to the area plan to better reflect those efforts. So one thing I want to point out is that as the area plan goes forward, we'll just continue to accept comments on the, on the area plan. So you might see, there might be refinements even as we, as we move through the final stages of the process. So one piece, so we'll get to the cumulative impacts. So part of the environmental analysis for the area plan too includes an analysis of cumulative impacts, and so we have to take into consideration all of these, all of these projects, all these, what TRPA is terming as kind of near-basin projects, so Squaw and Martis, Palisades, pretty much everything I just went through. And so we've been, you know, working through that, and during that time, working through that kind of over the winter, we received two comment letters from TRPA, one on Squaw and one on Martis. And they were related about, they were related really about their concern about transportation effects from all of these, you know, really cumulative effects of all these projects. And they term it as, what they, they term as in-basin impacts. So impacts those projects have to the basin, and specifically to their efforts to achieve environmental threshold gain. And so they really want to know what we're doing about transit. And so over the last few months, we have been really working with TRPA and our consultants on this issue, and have been engaged in a, I would say, a very productive dialogue about this, and how to address these, these, what they call in-basin impacts related to these pending development projects in the basin, namely Squaw and Martis, these big, specific plans. And so they, there, I would say, too, their comments are related to traffic, but they're also a little bit about greenhouse gas emission impacts as well. And so we've been talking through that. They've noted the importance for us to explore, excuse me, opportunities for transportation and transit capital improvement programs, as well as ongoing transit funding, to offset these impacts. And so, you know, while these projects are definitely outside of the basin, they're not associated with the implementation of the regional plan or the area plan, you know, they're not, they don't have jurisdiction over these projects, we believe that given their proximity, it's important to, to work through, you know, their concerns with them. And so we're really looking at a comprehensive approach and how to strategize to address these, address these issues. And so one thing that, that we are doing in the basin, and this came up at the last board hearing that we had in Tahoe, we were asked, you know, what, what are we doing in the basin relative to dealing with, you know, transportation issues like you had brought up? And we are participating and have prepared a, what's called a North Tahoe Truckee Transit Service Vision Plan. It's kind of a long name. And it includes, it's a regional approach, you know, the TTD's been involved in it, the Resort Association, the town of Truckee, so it's kind of a collaborative plan that looks at transit solutions and, and, or transportation solutions, but really focuses in on transit, and includes looking for opportunities for funding. And so we're actually gonna be bringing that document to our board in April for adoption. And so we're actually gonna be bringing that document to our board in April for adoption and, and give a, you know, a very detailed presentation on what it includes and what the funding opportunities are. And we have been really kind of informing TRPA of these efforts. And to date, they, they're very encouraged by that. It would potentially also include some private investment into, you know, into the, into the solution, into the bigger picture. How are these, you know, the ski resorts, for example, how are they contributing to this picture? This, what we'd like to see in terms of transit? And so we feel like we're, you know, slowly but moving a step closer to meeting their concerns and really addressing these larger, you know, transportation issues in the Tahoe Basin. So that's kind of where we're at with that. It's an ongoing dialogue.
So it sounds like the county's taking the lead on that, even though most of these roads are like, 89 and 267 are state highways, aren't they?
Yes, yeah.
As well as the road in the basin?
You know, I'm not sure if, if Caltrans is involved in that, that plan. I'm sure they are, and, you know, to what degree, I'm not sure. But, but I mean, yeah, those roads are, are, you know, state highways. So I would, but I'm not sure if they're a partner in terms of, you know, adopting the vision plan. But I know that certainly, you know, we, we talk about funding opportunities and how to address, you know, transportation issues on those highways, for sure, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like county's taking the lead.
On the transit plan, yeah, in terms of adopting it, absolutely. We're, we're definitely involved and, and, you know, strategizing on, on solutions and on this vision plan, yes. Yeah, and so I, I really feel like we're getting to a better place with demonstrating our efforts to TRPA in that regard and addressing the concerns that we received. And, you know, in the, in the form of written comments on those, on these larger projects. So there'll be more to come in that, when the draft, excuse me, when the final documents come out on those two large, specific plans, there'll be, you know, some discussion on these topics. And our, our intention is that, you know, that it all tie back to, to this vision plan and what the county wants to see for, for transit.
Let me see, your mission, you mentioned in the vision plan. And I can remember previous hearings, there seemed to be a disconnect, the area plan that you're looking at. And then there was, I guess, a business group or was, was working on a vision and there seemed to be a disconnect that was going on there. Has that been resolved now? So you're really just working on an area plan?
Yep, that's resolved and pieces of that community vision. So that vision had been, it was for Tahoe City. And that had been really developed by the Business Association there downtown. And with not a lot of county involvement initially. But we got involved and got the community more engaged in that process. And so those elements that came out of that have been folded into the area plan. So yeah, that, that issue, I mean, it was an issue back in, you know, in, in, gosh, I think that was 2013. But that's been resolved and the key elements that, that we, you know, we got input from the community on those and, and have folded those elements into, and I'm gonna talk about one of them actually, but they've been folded into the area plan. So yeah.
Is the area plan, is it approaching the?
Final stages.
Yeah, the apex or, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're in a really good place. And so let me talk about that really quick here. Well, I, well, let me go to the schedule and then I'll come back and talk about these other pieces because I just thought maybe I'd walk you through this stuff too, since I had your attention. So in terms of next steps, we, you know, continue this dialogue with TRPA, but we're really, you know, making very good progress on the draft environmental impact report, environmental impact statement. And we, we expect a draft of that to, to come out in late spring. We just had a call this morning on it and it looks like an admin draft will be out to county review in March. So we review that, turn it back to the consultants and then, you know, then we get a draft, right? And then we'll release that to the public. That'll be released for 60 days, during which time, once again, it'll come before your commission to take input on that. So you guys are, you're gonna be very busy, no vacations in spring.
In the spring? I'm gonna be gone part of the spring, one day, one of the days, April.
You're gonna be busy.
Busy?
Busy in the spring, it looks like.
Make it May and June.
Yeah, and then we expect planning commission deliberations on, on, again, well, this would be an input on the draft, probably, you know, sometime during that 60-day public review period. And then deliberations on the final documents probably in fall with a TRPA submittal right after that. So it does have to go, the area plan has to go to TRPA for a review. So what they, they call it conformance review. So they review the area plan to make sure it conforms to their regional plan. And it'll go, you know, it'll be thoroughly vetted through the TRPA board and, and hopefully adopted. That's the intention. So real quick though, before I end, that, that was actually my last slide, but let me just walk through. I just wanted to bring this to your attention because we had a couple other efforts, excuse me, which the community had wanted us to look at. So this is kind of the community's vision. They wanted us to look at area-wide solutions to address parking issues. And so we did prepare a North Tahoe Parking Study. And, and there were some new, some proposed standards that came out of those. And when I say standards, I, I mean things like parking design, how the parking lots are designed, but also the ratios of parking. So if you've got, you know, certain types of uses, how many stalls, parking stalls are you required to put on your property? And just to look for solutions to deal with some parking issues that the community sees. And so we've developed some new standards, that's all folded into the area plan. People seem excited about that. We've looked for flexibility where we can because we recognize, in, in the town centers. Because we recognize that in Tahoe City and Kings Beach, you have very, very small lots. And it's really hard, you know, if you're redeveloping in those town centers, it's very hard to actually get parking, right? And, and so we've been working hand in hand with the community and actually the business associations to come up with some solutions on parking. And, and the Parking Study outlined some, some strategies. So this was a great effort. And it, one thing it did include, which is not included in the area plan, but it included a recommendation for an in-loofy program. Communities kind of lukewarm on that idea, you know, because it's, it's an additional fee potentially, right, to, to redevelop. And so that's been tabled for now. That, if that came forward, it would be a standalone program. So it would run its own course through, through the process, be vetted, publicly vetted and go before our board for consideration. That would be something that would probably, an, an effort that would be ran by Department of Public Works. With, you know, planning would certainly be involved in it, but it would be a standalone program.
And that's based on parking?
Yeah.
And so that if they can't meet their parking requirements, they would satisfy that by paying you some fee that could be used for off-site sort of parking type of facility?
Right, so then the idea is the county, you know, you, you collect those fees and the county would build the parking. And it, and the fee really would be presumably a gap, right? It would be funding that, that gap, but, but yeah, we did have one workshop on, on this concept and people were not that excited about it. Just, I think they, you know, they really want.
People want the parking, just like they want the, for the in-loop programs up there, they don't particularly care for it in the community where I live, simply because it doesn't give what the community wants. They want the parking and they want the affordable employee housing. They don't want in-loop fees going somewhere else, waiting 20 years to build a county parking lot. This is what they need now for each, that's why.
Right, yeah, because.
Yeah, and you know, we heard a lot of concern about just increased fees. And, you know, it's difficult to get any redevelopment on the ground in, in the Tahoe Basin. And, and so this would be one more barrier, you know, is, is really what we've heard. And so we're looking at some other, we've, we've identified some other solutions for now. Perhaps this, you know, will be more palatable in, you know, I don't know, next year or something. And we can certainly, or identifying ways that, you know, those fees could be subsidized somehow. We've been talking through all this, but what we've heard right now is that they, they're not that excited about it in loopies. So we've taken a step back on that. So another effort is, is called the Tahoe City Mobility Plan. And so this is a plan to really further pedestrian and bicycle mobility-related improvements in the Tahoe City. So it was focused on Tahoe City. It was a grant actually that we wrote and we got. And it really implements the community vision. They wanted to see some mobility improvements. And so again, this is another effort that I'm folding into the area plan, making some refinements where I can to better demonstrate what we're doing. People are excited about this. And I'm gonna show you, there's three key elements that came out of the visioning that we did in Tahoe City. So this is a study area. So it's really, it's really just, you know, kind of the core of, of Tahoe City. And it's largely right, right, right in here. One element is an integrated parking scenario. So when I talked about the county's interest in the golf course, when we purchased the golf course, this is Grove Street right here and then Highway 28. And then right behind here is the golf course. And so in order to do this, what you see right here, this would be like kind of a newer parking and then some circulation, right? So you can come, right now, this is all blocked and you can't, you come in here and you can't get out. And so the idea is you open up and you, you create mobility throughout town and some additional parking and then a trail, that kind of thing. Again, trying to integrate the golf course into the community and just create a more walkable environment. Well, to do this right here, this piece, this is actually on the golf course property right here. So in order to get these kinds of improvements, you, you, you know, you have to do that on the golf course. So, and then it opens up some areas for what you see right here. It's hard to read these, but these are little public plazas, you know, the idea of, of, you know, an improved streetscape, you know, and providing places for people to gather. We heard that over and over again during our visioning and people really wanted places to gather in town and create kind of a vibrant, active town form. So that's one concept. We just had a workshop on this last week, actually, and we got some really good feedback. We're in the process of kind of putting all that feedback together in a summary report. And then the Lakeside Trail Alternatives. For those of you that don't know, there is a gap in the Lakeside Trail. Right now, you can get, you know, you can come down near the marina along the lake in Tahoe City and then you get to Commons Beach and it stops. And then there's this gap and, you know, people, some people go along the road and some people go through these condos here. So there's been a desire for a lot of years to close the gap. And so then the trail connects right here and then it goes down the lake, or goes down to the river. And so, and this has been talked about and talked about and talked about. And we decided to, you know, the community really wanted this and it came up in the visioning. And so we decided to take it a step farther and further. And, and so what we did here is looked at some alternatives. And so really, the two alternatives are, you know, kind of along the road. It's important to note that this alternative right here would require the demolition of the fire station in Tahoe City. And so there's no way around it because you have some great issues right here coming down from the, the road to the Commons Beach area. And so they've out, so through this mobility plan process, they outlined a few different alternatives to actually get this alignment in. And then this one, go around the lake, is a little harder because a lot of these private property owners here along the lake don't like this option. And so there has been some opposition there. But, you know, a lot of people feel like the trail should go along the lake, it's the Lakeside Trail. So, so we just, you know, put some concepts together and threw it out there and got some input and, and then we'll take it from there. And then the third concept that we looked at, it has been, it's really about pedestrian safety and mobility. But, so this is Grove Street. And so right now, so see these bold, so this is a conceptual illustration here showing what it could look like. So this is called a hybrid beacon, which is kind of like what you see at the Fanny Bridge, you know, when you're crossing Fanny Bridge and, and they put that signal in. So it helps to really focus pedestrians, you know, on the sides of the streets and then they all cross together so you don't have people just crossing all the time and it causes traffic delays. The idea is that you, you help shepherd folks, right, across, across the street and cars are stopping and improve safety. And, well, we have kind of a similar problem right here where you've got a lot of folks crossing along here. And so the idea was to look at ways that, you know, what would this look like if we did one here? Could, could it work? And so we studied that. And are, are getting input on this one too. And, and I think folks are really excited about this one as well. So it improves safety, improves mobility, and it also frankly improves traffic flow too because you're not, cars aren't having to stop for every person that's walking across. You congregate those people together to, to cross, cross the street at one time and it improves the traffic. So that's, that's really what we've been doing. So these concepts, again, you know, vetting them through the community and then they'll be folded into the area plan to better demonstrate what we're doing for mobility. And TRPA is very happy about that as well. So that's kind of where we're at with the area plan. I have taken up an enormous amount of your time, but lots going on in Tahoe, as you can see. And, yeah, just a lot of activity. So I'm happy to answer any further questions you have on that.
Go ahead, Richard.
I have, okay, we're gonna have Wayne.
Let me see, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
One, I noticed something still going on in Homewood. What's the status of the Homewood?
I'm gonna turn to Karen.
The Court of Appeal issued their decision at the end of December. They found it a challenge to the general plan consistency. They were not persuaded by that. However, the court determined that the EIR is deficient and is ordering it back to the trial court to issue a writ to order the county to reanalyze, to analyze mass evacuation, impacts of mass evacuation. We are currently waiting for what's referred to a remittitor is basically the message from the Court of Appeal to the trial court to take this action. We're waiting for that to happen right now. Part of that is once, once the writ is issued, the Court of Appeal has ordered that an injunction be put in place that nothing may happen by either the applicant or the county to move forward with the Homewood project until this issue, the EIR, is redone, recirculated and the process, redone.
Did you, did you use the word mass evacuation?
Yes, I did.
What is that?
What the court, in, in oral argument, I was actually present for oral argument in September. And to the surprise of everyone, what the panel focused on was, in the Homewood EIR, the Homewood EIR determined that the cumulative traffic impacts on that roadway are significant and unavoidable. And what the, the three panelists focused on was, well, okay, you've said that is cumulative, significant and unavoidable. However, you've determined in the EIR that if you had to have a mass evacuation due to a fire, that, that is less than significant. And how do you support a less than significant conclusion when you've already said that the roadway upon which theoretically all these people would evacuate is significant and unavoidable? And that was the crux of where they found there, there to be a deficiency in the EIR.
Okay, so I guess that'll come back and be worked on and.
Correct.
Hopefully the, whoever's got that project, they don't just throw their hands up. I did read, I think, in the project list, something to do with, and I think it was at Homewood, something about soil placement or?
Pursuant to the court's order, nothing will happen.
Nothing will happen, okay.
No.
Okay, so that answers Homewood. Let me see, the other question I have is, it seems like in the distant past, we dealt with a North Star master plan?
Right.
Maybe in a, I don't know if it was a draft or a final, but it seems to have.
It disappeared?
I don't know if it's disappeared or not.
No, it's just been on hold. So there's been another project, actually, I'm not sure if the retrofit project came forward.
Would you like me to respond?
Yeah, can you Karen?
The Homewood, Homewood has been involved in a third-party litigation. And I can't remember if this commission has been. Pardon me, North Star, hello, I'm mixing up my litigation. North Star has been in, involved in a third-party litigation that didn't involve the county with Aspen Grove, which is the condominium project down slope of North Star for quite some time. Part of what happened, trying to shorten the story, is there was a judgment in that case that the water quality basin on North Star had to be moved. And, yes, in fact, hello, you heard the retrofit appeal. Sorry, I'll get this right. Right, that appeal is, at this point, the appellant and the Aspen Grove representatives have requested that the appeal, it was really originally going to be heard by the board on the 23rd of February, be, be continued out for 90 days, which is what's happened because those parties are continuing to discuss settlement and want to go through that process before this appeal's heard. It is our hope that there will be a global settlement that will result in that appeal not going forward. In other words, a resolution to the appeal, but we don't know that yet. So in deference to the parties, we continued it out and have a tentative date in late May, I believe, for that appeal at the Board of Supervisors. Based on what was happening with this litigation, a lot of the projects, including the master plan, were put on hold partly by the attorneys to, in, in what I perceive an effort to address this civil litigation first. So the master plan is on hold, as well as, I believe there's one other project that was on hold.
And.
Fire, yes.
Fire, the force.
Fire project, so it's complicated. So it's complicated, but that's kind of where it's at.
Be calm and maybe someday we'll see.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wayne?
Crystal, thank you for the overview, it's very helpful. This may be an EJ question. Given all of these projects that are moving forward and the EIRs that are in progress or will be in progress, it appears that we may be spending a lot of time up in Tahoe besides the 24th of March, is that sort of your thought?
Yeah, you know, that's one of the challenges. I mean, these are, these are large projects and being that they are in Tahoe, you want them-
Right.
-considered in Tahoe, just because that's where the communities are and the residents reside. So the challenge for staff is going to be how we line these up for, you know, for your schedule, for the public's benefit, who's commenting on these projects. So, you know, right now, we're, we're kind of putting together a timeline of when we anticipate projects going. As we all know, you know, the 11th hour, something comes up, some of these get pushed out. So, you know, what, I guess the best we can do for you right now is, you know, keep you updated on the status of these projects as they come along and then, you know, when we go to Tahoe, we want to make sure it's worth our while and we're, you know, we're there for a purpose, so we'll, we'll keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other questions, staff? Any, anyone in the audience have a question for the audience that's remaining, for Crystal? Thank you, Crystal.
If you're the audience and not working for the county?
Thank you.
Yeah, any, I'm not going to recognize that issue or not. The record's got to show that we did have an audience. Okay, if there be no further business, I guess, at this time, unless EJ has something to say.
I don't have anything further.
Okay, I thought you were reaching for your microphone to turn it off, maybe. I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you all.
You're done?
Hey, what was this, what was this supposed to be about, Jennifer getting involved in our hair or something?
Well, now we know.